We have, right in the meeting we come to order, we have quite a few pieces of business tonight, so we'll try to step through them quickly. Everything, Jean and Rebecca, that's on the list is going to be covered, or there any items that are?
The first of the, I think they've requested a continuance to the October 4th.
So that's the 1210 Osgood Street Public Area for both the residential and commercial. And clipped to your agenda is their request for continuance.
Okay.
So I would just ask that you, if you are going to grant the continuance, just motion for that.
Yeah, well, we don't, I mean technically, need to do that because there's no clock that's stalling, but I think we've.
So on a special permit, there's 65 days once the permit is opened unless they continue. So.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, then we'll make a, would somebody to make a motion to accept a request for continuance?
So moved.
Okay. We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we're going to do then the new public areas, of which there are three, we'll start with the Nets one.
Okay. So this application is for a site plan review special permit for the relocation of the Nets operation at 1600 Osgood Street. The proposal is to relocate Nets from its existing position, which is to the western rear of the main building, so the western portion of the lot, to both the north and the south. It's approximately two and a half acres on the north lot and two and a half acres to the south. So I'm going to start is with the north piece. So in the blue hashed area there, you can see the footprint of the proposed Nets. In the orange, there's an auto school that exists today, it's a driving school, that kind of just shifts a little bit, but that is an existing business today. And to the right where you see those just topo lines is existing ball fields. So the Nets operation, we reviewed it at a previous meeting as a discussion item. They will actually come to this location from the very western perimeter road, that is an existing road today. It's not in operation today, however, it was in the past. And we will show you that route as we go to the south lot. So the very dark blue lines here are identifying rigid barriers. Those barriers are approximately 3,000 to 3,500 pound concrete blocks. And that is separating the auto school there, to the very north of this hashed area. And it's also separating, where the red line is to the right of the Nets footprint, is a pedestrian walkway to a gate for the ball fields. Now that walkway is limited only to maintenance access for the ball fields, so to line soccer fields or baseball fields for maintenance of, they have a porta potty in there, and emergency access. So a auto turn analysis, you can fairly see in the, an orange line there, is an ambulance route. So those are a double gate that will allow access for emergency access, maintenance, and ADA access if required.
Sorry, Jean, where is that? That's where one, I see where it says ambulance auto turn?
Yep. So that, where that number one is in the dark red stripe is a three-foot painted walkway for pedestrian.
Okay.
And the blue line right next to the white is actually movable barriers, and I'll describe those. So the dark blue is a rigid, the movable barriers are essentially a highway construction barrel. And so those barriers are blocking off that entrance. And the fire department has reviewed the site, he has submitted an email that it does provide adequate emergency access. So those barrels would actually be moved out of the way and the ambulance would come in. The reason for them really to be there is it restricts kind of drop-off in that area. Oh, I'm sorry. So we don't want any cars coming down there to drop off for any reason other than access for emergency or maintenance vehicles. Okay. So that's the highway construction type barrier. And that's the concrete block. So again, they're 3,000 to 3,500, they're called rigid, they are technically movable, but it would require heavy equipment to move that. The training course, so if we bring up, we asked Nets to kind of describe what kind of activities would be occurring, I'm going to the best practices. So we asked, because of sensitivity in the proximity to the ball fields, they provided that rigid barrier next to that red stripe, that wasn't on the original site plan, however, that's been added. And I asked them to display kind of the activities that will take place closest to those ball fields. And these are outlined in green, I apologize, it's a little hard to read, but to the south of this footprint, so the two smallest ones are pre-trip testing for trucks, so those trucks really don't move, it's a checklist going over to teach kind of the checklist that would happen before you take your truck out. To the north of those smaller ones is backup training. So the intent there is tractor trailers will straight line backup. And then to the west of those is parallel parking training. So that's predominantly the north end of the parking lot, the activities that will be taking place. You can see that box, which is in the playing field area, so the gate is just above that box with that pedestrian access way. And again, it's very, very limited use in terms of pedestrian access, it's really ADA. Other than that, it's off hours maintenance. Does anyone have any questions on the north, or do you want to, go ahead?
So, on the edge of the green there, you had the heavy barrier, the blue line, where the blue line was.
Yep.
Why is that also not going all the way up to the top? Like it looked like maybe there was just the existing chain link fences there?
Yep. So we'll go back to the cycling for that. So one item, if you reviewed, as you know, I prepared a draft decision for tonight, so if you reviewed that, there was one item in the engineering review that they suggested continuing those rigid barriers. In the middle, there's what's called a movable shelter, and that's essentially, it looks like a construction trailer type fixture. It provides shelter during the training days if the weather is off or whatnot.
Right.
So that shelter, what Tech suggested was to continue the rigid barrier to the end of the site, which would run parallel with the fence. So the ball field has a perimeter fence, it also has a curved island outside this fence that's filled with stone, but there is probably a three-foot wide curved island that runs down that. I had the fire department look at that and weigh in. They didn't have concerns that a truck would be able to make a turn to go to that if the truck's activities are running parallel to that fence. In his opinion, he thought it was a safe environment, but that is the one item that I kind of left as, I'm going to defer to you guys.
So again, point exactly where we're referring to, so if you all.
So you see with the rigid barrier today along that red stripe, running parallel to the red stripe?
So you know it doesn't go all the way?
Yeah, it doesn't go all the way.
Right. So then it stops, that's the mobile shelter, which is the rectangular piece after the red line. And what Tech has suggested, started again at the end of that mobile barrier and run it to the, to the end of the site.
Yeah.
Yes, I think that makes sense.
So why are, why are you said?
Well, the trucks are straight line backing at that point.
Do you want me to identify yourself to the record, please?
I'm Don Lane with New England Tractor Trailer Training Schools. So the trucks would be straight line backing, so there's really no way where the trailers end on the back fixed blue line, that they'd even be able to get into that area. I mean, we could extend that, the barriers, but there's really not a need to because of the type of backing that's going on there, they're parallel to that fence line.
I'm thinking they're not just stopping the trucks, they're stopping kids. I mean, I have a child who plays in that field, the porta potty is right there where that structure is, right? So he goes over to the porta potty, he gets some desire to go out and see the truck, I mean.
Well, that gate's locked, so nobody can come through that, nobody can come through that fence. That fence is going to be locked at all times, so nobody will have access through that area. Only ADA people would have access through that gate, and it would be unlocked and then relocked by the soccer staff.
Right. So the fields have put in a protocol, and there is a sign on the backside of that fence that says absolutely, they really have to crawl under the fence just to get out there. So if anybody going in there, and their protocol is abandon the ball, where if it were to go over there, they email NASA Fields and they'll replace the ball.
How much, how much additional concrete are you talking about? To do the whole thing?
Not sure, Rick.
I believe it's about 125 feet.
So you're not talking like an unbelievable expense? I mean, to be on the side of caution.
Yeah, I think, it just makes me more comfortable to have it there.
These things will not be there forever, it'll just be there for a certain time and you'll be able to move them.
So are you suggesting like on the backside of the mobile shelter, just continue that on the fence line?
Yes, yes.
That's fine. That's easy.
Okay. What else, Jean, that's.
On the north side, the soccer fields are continuing to use it, they've displaced their parking to the front of the building, there's signage, everything's been put in place. It was really between the building commissioner and the soccer fields in terms of providing safe access. Crosswalks have been painted, there's one curb cut that needs to be made in order to provide ADA access from the handicap spaces to that pedestrian walkway. But other than that, I went Saturday, they've already stopped anybody from parking in that area, even though Nets isn't there, so that they can get used to the new parking requirements. The operation seemed safe and okay to me, but I was there for a half hour.
And police department, did it look bad?
The police department did not have concerns, fire department was there.
Now, what about any of the engineering issues, have they all been cleared yet?
So I'll have Rick Wade speak to the stormwater management system, but they've done significant work. Lisa Eggleston has signed off, and Tech, with the exception of that one decision, has signed off on the engineering. Again, they made comments related to ADA access outside of this footprint, but the building commissioner has provided an email saying he's reviewed all of it, and he's deemed it adequate, with the exception of a couple of conditions that are in the decision. And they're related to just either striping or signage. So, I'm just going to tell them about the feedback here, but go ahead.
Rick Wade from Meridian Associates. Quite frankly, they're quite simple, Lisa Eggleston and myself worked very well together and came up with a solution that I am very confident she signed off on. Basically, there are two different types of mitigation that we're proposing. One is a plastic insert that acts as a gas trap and debris eliminator in four of the structures, and then there's a second catch basin insert, which actually goes right beneath the grate of seven of the catch basins, that is an eliminator of oils and hydrocarbons and whatnot. All those details are shown on the plans that you have in front of you.
And those inserts can be reused, removable, moved to different location if Nets does end up relocating?
So, any? Oh, we.
Yeah, I mean, this, again, when you get to the decision, number one says do not enter for signage, we're going to alter that to authorize vehicles only, that occurs on the other side. I think we've wrapped up every concern between Tech, Lisa, and to be honest, myself. I've spent a lot of time out there on the site, I've met with John Lane, Larry at the second number of times, building commissioner, I think, prior to it. Specifically to the snort side, I thought that was by far the most sensitive side in terms of the competing uses, or the proximity of uses. But today, that auto school operates adjacent to where the parking is with orange cones, just the typical little orange cones. I think it separates those two uses better, I think it separates it from the ball fields better with these barriers, so.
Derek.
Oh, Derek's here? Derek, you want to speak on behalf of that? Sorry, Derek, I didn't know you were here.
So some of you probably have seen the emails.
But just for the record.
Sure, Derek Wessel, resident, also Fields@NorthAndoverSoccer.com, those people know me by that. So I don't know if it's about training children, but they all have coaches, and they all have parents. It's all been communicated to them repeatedly via email. There was a picture up there with the sign, although not completely legible, in the one area where a child could gain access to the parking lot, which is underneath the gate fence. And it states very clearly, abandon the ball and let us know, and we will provide you with a new ball if the ball is ultimately lost.
That's a low practice, but the deal's good.
Correct. We don't encourage kids to venture outside of the fence, there's usually enough parents and or coaches to prevent that from happening. You know, we'll retrieve balls when the time is right, but we don't go down there every day to do it. You know, I think at the same time, if a ball's sitting in the parking lot, you kind of toss it over the fence, so.
The other thing I wanted to bring up, Derek, that you did mention previous conversations that typically, in a typical week, only one ball per week comes over the fence, so.
And that's been consistent in terms of the emails I've gotten. So I've had two reports of a lost ball, one did go over into the parking lot, they abandoned it. Another one actually went over in the, on the other side. A lot of balls go over there, I don't know that they ever get retrieved or not. This is the first time we've ever offered to replace them, so we owe two soccer balls to two kids through three weeks. We've got lots of soccer balls.
Just speak to the hours of, because those are.
Sure. Yeah, and a weekday, we're typically there no earlier than 4:30, and we'll leave at dusk in the fall, which I don't think, once.
We're done right around that time, from 5:00.
So very little crossover early on, we have a few people who do practice early, but generally they won't practice at Osgood property if they, they practice that early. And then on the weekends, it'll, on Saturday specifically, it'll run pretty much throughout the day. And I'm not baseball, but that would be consistent with baseball's use as well.
So baseball.
I've effectively created everything that baseball would use.
It would have to be in place as part of this site plan, that this protocol would be in place.
Okay. So.
I'd tell you, if you tried to crawl under that gate, you'd probably hurt yourself, just the same way you'd hurt yourself if you tried to climb over the gate. Look, I've seen kids do it, it's just the nature of, you know, somebody sees enough crawl space to make an attempt, they might try.
Well, I think to Peter's comment, though, I think on the other picture I saw was about 12 inches, 10 to 12 inches of space underneath the fence. Would the soccer, or soccer, baseball get together and put down some gravel or something like that to make it less conducive? It's crawling on gravel, and if you put it on the one side of the swing, the swing in, you can keep it pretty level right there where it dips down, where you have a wear pattern. That'd be.
I mean, if you want us to put down gravel, sure.
Oh, I mean, if you think, if you said you saw a kid crawl underneath it.
I've seen it once in seven years.
Okay, so then, okay. I thought you meant once since you implemented this policy.
No, no, sorry, my, yeah, I've done this far too long. Yes.
Yeah, let's just ask if there's any questions from the public, we're proposing close to public hearing.
What, so we haven't come to the south lot?
Oh, we haven't come to the south lot.
Right, right. That's what I meant by south. I just wanted, the loading dock area is on that end.
Okay, let's do that now.
So again, at a recent meeting, the application for the solar panels was in to, you can see that green, again, to the far left of this picture, there's a green dotted line, that's a fence that we okay to be moved in in order to open up that accessway. So that's the rear perimeter, western perimeter accessway that will travel from the south to the north. Again, those number ones there are signage indications for do not enter, they'll have to be changed to authorize vehicles only, and that passageway is really for Nets trailers to go from this lot to the north lot. So on the accessway in, the main access from the light on Osgood Street remains the same, and that's that southern roadway that you see in the picture. There'll be loading dock arrow sign with number two is, directing people to the loading dock. So now the loading dock, in the past, it was almost a 90-degree turn right in the middle of this blue area, it will now bring them down and around the proposed Nets location and kind of take a right back to the loading dock area. And that is an auto turn analysis, I know it's hard to see on this. Everybody, there's full set of plans if you need them at your stations. So there's an auto turn analysis showing a tractor trailer navigating both to the loading dock, as well as taking a left and using the roadway to the north lot. The blue dashed line underneath where the solar panels are, is not related to Nets, it's actually tractor trailer parking area, spinning wheels is the tractor trailers I see the most. They currently are located near the storage tanks that you see in the picture, they'll be relocated to that area in white with the blue dash lines. The Nets activity will all remain within the blue area. Again, it's about 2.5 acres, they have state police testing that will occur here, so there's some striping required and things like that. But for the most part, it's again rigid barriers and the duck blue lines with movable barriers to allow for entrance in and out and along those storage tanks.
Just a question.
Yeah.
I've lost as to where we are here, where is the loading dock exactly here?
Oh.
Right there, okay. And to get to that loading dock.
There's the auto turn.
Okay.
You can see the auto.
Okay, they won't be using this.
No, no.
Good.
Yeah.
So the loading dock service is a number of other buildings, businesses within the building.
Now, the long drive that runs along the property fence to get from the north to, from the south to the north, is that capable of supporting two trucks?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. How wide is it?
It's between 25 and 30 feet.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, yeah. I don't know why you can't see it.
I have your question.
Even with my glasses on.
So again, the stormwater management and select catch basins on this end of the property as well, so.
And that's all those issues have been cleared?
Yep.
Fiber safety is fine, is, now, what type of barrier in this case is it going to be?
Same thing, the dock line, can you spell that? The dock line.
Actually, there's no rigid barriers in this site.
No, there's no, it's all movable, I'm just. So they're all the highway barriers.
Okay.
Looks to be docked there.
Any questions? And any questions from the public? Okay. So there's no more information we can take here, we have all the information. So Jean, we can close the public hearing, you're okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
So would somebody like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
We'll be closed to public hearing on the New England Tractor Trailer Training School in Mass, 15th and 7th Osgood Streets.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we have, we have your decision.
as parcel 17 and 54. Both mapped there.
By the way, you have approximately five acres, do you know exactly what it is?
The site plan does have it, it's like 2.7, 2.58, I think.
Can we put that in there?
Yeah.
I just think it'll test.
Okay. 2.7. So it's 5.4 acres gone, but we'll put it up.
That first paragraph, it says the site project is located at 1600 Osgood Street and 0 Osgood Street.
Yep. So the north lot is actually a different parcel, and because there's no structure, because there's no structure on it, it actually has a 0 Osgood Street address.
We like zeros.
It does look odd, but it's.
Any, you're.
For a button notification, we actually had to notify borders of that lot as well as the main lot, so.
You need to modify 15 to take into account the extension of the rigid blocks, or is it adequate the way it is? We're adding that section?
I would add that as a condition.
Yeah.
So number 13, that yellow highlight was because that was the piece that was pending. So Tech suggested it, and then I'll modify that and add a condition to extend the rigid barriers.
I'd also like something in here, too, about what we discussed about this information being conveyed to the baseball boosters club, too, somehow.
Should they go on 17?
It says NASA, NASA, you know, just, I don't know. Have a conversation with them, too.
And 14, by the way, I really like the detail finding a fact, I think that's just really just going through all the logic that went into our decision, which I think is, this is just about the best one I've ever seen, so very well done. So now we're going to make one comment about something that you guys.
Before you guys have saw this, so I.
So you're picking that as a comment, yeah.
I expect there will be something, yes.
The, in 14, where the comment says inappropriate ADA accessway of course is required, is that a condition? Because it's sort of modifying the facts, but it's more like a condition.
So there's a curb cut requirement, and that's a condition.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind that we say that it will be required, but make sure that whenever, you know, as written, however, an adequate ADA accessway is required, really more in the way of a condition, it's, you know, if you said that we are requiring it, you know, that would be okay.
So condition number 26 is referencing that, and the only reason I put it is required because in that email, he states that it is required, so.
Jean, the top paragraph of 4, second line, according to the provisions of the North, so.
Yeah, very good. Okay.
And I think that condition 24, that's vision, what I said about the baseball field.
Yeah. That's where I tried to keep it a little more generic, so as a finding of fact, the only people we have spoken to is North Andover Soccer. Okay. And my understanding, what Osgood Properties does is at each season, they sign a new license agreement with users, so it, spring and fall, well, I guess just spring for, I'm sorry, fall for soccer and spring for baseball, each season, they trigger a new license agreement, so. All right, and so one question I have is, and I haven't seen Dan Larry, but, oh, he's here. Okay, so I asked Dan in terms of lead time, so I don't have a section prior to certificate of occupancy, and I know they're very anxious to start moving and getting their operation up and going. So some of this will require a building permit, others might not require a building permit. So some of this will require a building permit, others might not require a building permit, but they want to get within the 20-day period as much done as they can.
As long as it's not subject to building permit, I think that's fine. And they do so with their own grass.
Yeah.
That's on your field, but I think that's fine.
However, given that the rigid barriers are in place and signage is in place, so there's things like that that I want to.
Those changes are key.
Okay. So I just want to make sure if there's things prior to the CO that you want to establish, we could add that section. Prior to the CO.
You all, you all good?
So do you, do you, wait a minute. Do you want to add prior to the CO that the barriers must be in place and signage? I mean, the inserts, if there's a lead time issue with the inserts, we might have to wait a couple of weeks. Okay.
Somebody like to make a motion to approve the decision as amended?
First, I'd like to go on record thanking Jean and Rebecca for getting this done on behalf of the applicant and, you know, the town and I'd like that so quickly considering it's a one review and they did probably 90% of it before the meeting, so. But I will make a motion to approve the 1600 Osgood Street, 0 Osgood Street, New England.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I have one more comment.
Could I make?
Nope. I just thanked you. You can't make a comment.
Sorry. I have gotten to my last page. So in the finding of facts, I'm going to make a small tweak to, because of the unique site, I'm going to refer to the definitions of locus or parcel. So I'm going to substitute site with how we defined it in the permit definitions. Okay? I apologize, but it's in number six and seven.
Can I take back my thing?
Sorry, Lynn.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan review as amended to 1600 Osgood Street, 0 Osgood Street, New England Tractor Trailer Training School of Massachusetts Incorporated.
Motion made in second. Is any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving right along, the next, we have two new public hearings. One is 575 Osgood Street, Edgewood Retirement. Jean and Rebecca, you want to give us the summary?
Rebecca, tee this up. So the applicant seeks a retirement center special permit and also a watershed protection district special permit for the construction of a new 38,760 square feet continuing care retirement center with 40 units in the small form style. The applicant is currently before the ZBA for a variance for a new structure in the watershed. They met with the ZBA on the 13th and the hearing was continued. They have also responded to all of our department comments and peer review comments, and we are going back and forth. We're now just waiting for an updated site plan. Additionally, we are looking to also share the new site plan with the Friends of North Andover Trails in order to do the relocation of the trails as well as the Conservation Commission, as they are considered the keepers of the trail.
So the project is not within conservation jurisdiction, although we have received comments from her and the applicant has addressed those comments. So peer review has gone out, all comments have been submitted back, and they've actually responded to those already, however, the site plan's not updated yet. And so I would anticipate tonight is going to be kind of a high-level project description, site plan review, and then next meeting hopefully we'll be into the weeds of really the comments and then peer review.
Great. All yours.
I'll just give a couple of opening comments, and then we're going to turn it over to the SMRT team for more of the technical pieces. But as you know, or if you.
For the record, you can write that in by yourself.
Yep, Bob Capola, Edgewood Retirement Community. Back when we first looked at doing this addition to the campus, it was for us, it's completing, taking us full circle because Edgewood already had an independent living section. We have a skilled nursing facility, and then this piece closes the continuum with an assisted living piece. And that's critical for us as we continue to work with the seniors in our community. We have met with the TRC committee. We've gotten a lot of comments from them. We've met with the building inspector, the fire department, Board of Health separately or independently, and we're continuing to work back and forth with both of them as we continue down this road. And we did take into account the comments that we had from folks when we were looking at the zoning bylaws, and that will be reflected in the drawings that they're going to show you as far as moving the building as far away from Half Mile Hill as we possibly could fit that on the site. And, you know, a couple of other minor changes was originally when you looked at it, we had two separate structures. We have since joined them together. One piece was to reduce the square footage slightly because, you know, we would have had two fitness areas, et cetera, two salons, all of those pieces. So by combining them, we were able to reduce that slightly. And also from going out and looking at other facilities across the state, we found out from talking to them when they had the separate units, it was difficult for residents to go from one program in building X to a program in building Y because then they had to deal with the elements. So it was critical for us as well to be able to allow our residents to be able to participate in different programs, to be able to do that internally. No elevators, we're able to do it all with grade by cutting and filling, you know, within the site to make that. Because here again, any of those things like elevators are difficult for someone that has dementia. So, you know, we're trying to make it as sensible for them and the right thing for them as far as their development to be able to do that. And you'll see when Jessica talks as well that there are four different living units, we're calling them, with 10 beds each, and they're all typical. They're all the same, even though they're in different buildings, the layout, et cetera, is the same.
Can I mention that some movement of the structure away from Half Mile Hill as a result of making that movement, is the structure any closer to the lake based on what you showed us before?
No, Peter, it's closer to that conservation restriction that's on Edgewood's property. We stayed up in that tight corner, and you'll see that when they do that, but everything is pulled in. And the other piece that we actually did was the great work that these folks did, we were able to reduce the area that we were going to be using. You know, we were talking about that five-acre piece that we needed, and we're down to about three and a half acres of actual space that we need. We'll maintain that five-acre piece because, just to give ourselves a little bit of that buffer, but the actual footprint has shrunk down within that space, and I think it looks great, and I'm sure you'll feel the same.
I just make sure you make the heart of master happy.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Well, thank you. My name is Ken Costello. I'm the project landscape architect on the project with SMRT Architects and Engineers out of Andover. As you said, Jean, this is going to be kind of a high view of the whole project. I also have Melissa Flynn, who's the project civil engineer, and Jessica Randolph, the project architect with me tonight, to kind of walk you through the process, walk the board through the process. As Bob mentioned, it's about three and a half acres of disturbance on the site. The site is 20.29 acres of undeveloped land adjacent to Edgewood property, adjacent to Half Mile Hill. I think we have three abutters, including Edgewood. So we're here tonight to show you our documents for multiple special permits for work within the watershed, protection district, non-discharge zone for the building, site plan review, special permit, and also the modification of the CCRC existing permit. As we mentioned, we have been to the ZBA board. We presented them last week, and we're continuing to the 11th for their next meeting. We have submitted a project notification form to the Mass Historical Commission, and they came back with, because of the proximity to Wire Hill, they have requested a phase one analysis which has been completed. We don't have the report yet, but the findings are that there was no findings. The other piece was, other permitting piece was the MISA for, we have a, we're inside a polygon for natural heritage for a moth, and also the white, the long-eared bat is basically a special, a threatened species now east of the Mississippi, so we fall under MISA's category.
Can I ask you a question? How did you even find that out?
Find out what? That you were, those species were there? The natural heritage mapping.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it shows a polygon, and it basically, it's a general location for that, and so you have to request, they don't tell you what it is in the heritage atlas. You have to actually submit a request to find out what it is. It was a moth, and it's actually, the habitat for the moth is more of a pine barren scrub oak forest. This is a, you know, an oak forest, a hardwood deciduous forest, so it's not, it's not a habitat for it. But somewhere in the region, there is a habitat for that moth, and that's how it gets drawn.
Just curious.
Yeah. So we've got a ruling back from MISA that they've gone through our project, and it's a no-take, classified no-take. So there's no more permitting that we need to do with MISA. So really, the permits we have is Mass Historical and then the town permitting. As Jean mentioned, we're out, we kept all our disturbance outside of the 100-foot buffer zone of the wetlands. There's no wetland disturbance, so there's no conservation commission. We're not within the jurisdictional uplands area. The site is, as we said, behind Edgewood, down by the lake. It's accessed by a 60-foot right-of-way easement, pond-to-pasture easement. So that's where we had come up with, we had just, for our applications, put in pond pasture. And there's no intended road to be called pond pasture because there was a concern in one of the comments about.
It's already leaving, that we already have a lost pond and a.
Pasture.
Pasture form or something, to that effect. But that wouldn't become a street name, by any means, so.
Impervious area for the site for lot coverage is 1.5 acres, so we're under the 10% of the 20-acre parcel. The intention is, right now, the parcel is owned by an LLC, and the intention is if the project, if all the permits can be achieved, then it will be, the parcel will be merged with the overall Edgewood parcel.
Right, that's.
Right, right.
All the natural requirements.
Because there is a CCRC requirement of 25 acres.
And is today the entire Edgewood a single parcel, or is it worth it more?
I believe it's a single parcel.
I believe it's a single parcel.
With multiple conservation restrictions on that.
Yeah.
It's approximately 80 acres.
Yeah.
So I can, I can.
By the way, when did you plan on, you were planning on putting that as part of the property process or when it's done?
We would request it as a condition to be done after this permitting, after the permitting.
The original CCRC had a condition that an A and R must be filed within, I think, 30 days of the approval.
That's fine.
So I don't know if you have the documents electronically, but just give you an overview of the site. The entire site borders all the way around down to the lake. The existing Edgewood parcel is right here. Half Mile Hill Trail is right here. So this development here, this area is bounded in orange with the building located on the site and parking access, that's the 3.5 acres. That's the 3.5 acres that we're talking about development. There's a few wetland parcels, and that's where we end up, wetland fingers, that's where we end up within the watershed protection zone, 400 feet, extends 400 feet beyond these wetlands. So part of the building is within the no-discharge zone, and that's why we're in front of the zoning board of appeals.
To Pete's question, how far is the nearest point on the building from the lake itself?
Approximately 700 feet. About approximately 700 feet and vertically, I'm not really sure how far vertically, it's probably 50 feet above the lake. The entire parcel slopes down through the lake.
What's the gray area on the drawing immediately to the east of the wetland?
Right here?
Yes.
This is a three-to-one slope down. This is a fill. There's a small knob here that was requiring a cut. As Bob mentioned, the building needs to be single floor level. So it's, we're basically cutting along this edge here and filling along that edge here. So these buildings will sit up kind of proud. Again, the entire site is wooded 60 to 8 foot high, mature trees. The building height elevation, roof peak is 35 feet, so it's within the zoning setbacks, zoning numbers. And we have some graphics to show you what this looks like, say, from the top of Half Mile Hill.
So in terms of the existing wooded condition.
Yeah.
Does the dotted orange line that I think you indicated was the 3.5.
5 acres.
5 acre site.
Yeah.
Is there any disturbance outside of that one?
Yeah.
No trees coming down?
There's, we've, well, on the Edgewood parcel here to make the connection, and then the existing trail, trail from the head, from the parking lot here, trailhead, goes down this way and goes down this way. So we are rerouting that trail, so there is a little bit of work outside that trail, but we're maintaining the trail the same way the conservation commission has now. It's basically we're going to rake the tritus, organic tritus to the sides, and just, that's the extent of the trail.
To the east of the building where that gray area is that I asked you about?
Yeah.
There's no tree?
No, from this, it's basically the clearing limit line is that orange line.
And that's, Peter, that's actually going to be where we're going to put our construction fence as well, to make sure that nobody goes past that zone, so that we keep everything within that, within that space.
Yeah, the proposed detail for the sedimentation erosion control down here is actually a chain link fence, and then we're going to have a silt fence, a hay bale, and a silt fence. So it's a very robust sedimentation erosion control, but it's also really clearly defining the limits of construction. So that's the.
By the way, one of the things I'm glad you did here is that you brought the building a little bit further down into the property, because I agree, I'll butt right up against the remaining property because it's all going to be part of the same lot, so I'm glad you did that. I appreciate the fact you couldn't go any further because it's already conservation restricted, and that would take an act of God to change that. But I think by putting it to the edge, I think you've actually done about as good as you can.
Right, we're, right, we're not respecting this setback line on this because it's intended to be fully one parcel, which would be basically the parcel line would be like this, so that would all be Edgewood property.
On that plan before you switch, there's a 15-inch steel culvert, and it says plugged. Is it plugged now, or are you going to plug it?
No, it was plugged when we did the survey.
Okay.
When Mike West went up and surveyed, he found it plugged. Yeah, that's existing, that's existing trails. As I said, we're not doing any work down in that area. Our work limit line is this orange line. So just to give you a little bit closer, closer view, again, our limit line, clearing limit line is right here, three and a half acres. It's in the, we pushed the building as far as we can this way. We now, we have 100-foot CCRC perimeter setback on this lot line here, so that's how we located this building. We're outside of the watershed protection zone, non-disturbed zone, so the only proposed work is within the non-discharge zone, which we need a special permit for, but we need to go to zoning board of appeals for variance first. So the existing Edgewood building, part of it is here, Meadows, and this is Caroline Way, and the existing parking lot goes down back here, the loading is back in this area. So the proposed curb cut, proposed access point would be off this driveway here, in with the 24-foot wide drive into a driveway here. We have service in this back corner here. There's a garage associated with the building, a single car garage that's utilized for storage and for access if they need to bring an ambulance in and out. Our generator, our transformer, our dumpster, all located in this location. We've got a drop-off here with a flush condition with bollards along the front, and then a walk into the main. with the 24-foot wide drive into a driveway here. We have service in this back corner here. There's a garage associated with the building, a single-car garage that's utilized for storage and for access if they need to bring an ambulance in and out. Our generator, our, our transformer, our dumpster, all located in this location. We've got a drop-off here with a flush condition with boulders along the front, and then a walk into the main entrance way, which is right here on the building. And then we have 32 parking spaces on, on the site. We do have a few emergency egress walks that we need to deal with for, for code issues. So we have emergency egress coming out of the back of the building here and out of this, this here. As Bob mentioned, there's four pods of four small homes, and they're in each wing. So there's 10 beds with kitchens that are only basically self-contained sections in these four pods here. Each pod has a enclosed fenced garden. This one here is actually shared between two, but then the other two each have their own outdoor space. There's some additional, we're formalizing a few locations of parking that's, this is currently a grass area that's being parked. We're actually proposing to put in porous pavement, porous papers to formalize that parking, just to, to make it a little bit easier to maintain. This is the gravel drive that comes down to the trailhead. Rerouting the trail basically along the walk, along the driveway here to connect to the Half Mile Hill Trail. This is an existing trail on Edgewood property.
Is there any identified parking for the trail access? So today, Half Mile Hill has three or four spots at the end of that gravel driveway?
Yeah, we're, we're envisioning that happening on the gravel driveway here.
The parking to be there?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we would look at it as-
By the way, just, we have to work that out.
Okay.
Yeah. That's pretty much it for, for site plan. I can have Melissa go through the utilities if you'd like to hear, utilities or see the building.
We definitely, I have two questions. One of the very top there, what is that, the, it looks like a bubble or something?
Above the park, that's the parking lot, right? What's that? This here? That's just the existing vegetation. That's just the existing tree line. So the, the, the limit of clearing is this edge. So it's just the existing tree line.
Okay. And the other question I have is related to the parking. Do you think you will need that much practically?
The residents are not, will likely not have vehicles, is that correct?
Yeah, the residents will not be driving, but we know that their families will be coming in to visit and-
The, the, the point that I make, sometimes we make a provision that, you know, you share the capability of it, you basically reserve it, but if it, don't build it all day one if you don't need it. And I don't know if you want that flexibility or not, but once you build it, it's there. If you don't build it, you can build it in the future, is my, is my point. If you don't think there's a strong 100% likelihood you need it.
And I saw a review consultant actually pointed out that there had been overflow from their existing parking lot, and had asked if that additional parking was going to be used for that as well.
Okay, so you're saying it's orderly?
So they said that there's overcrowding in their existing parking lot, and would they use the additional parking for that overcrowding?
Okay. And then maybe it is moved. But I mean, I think you still ought to consider, I don't know how severe the existing parking problem is, but you would know better than me.
Just to answer your question on the Half Mile Hill parking, John, we certainly wanted to talk with the commission about that because, you know, we had discussed that last year. So that's why we didn't designate anything at this point, so that we could have conversation on that.
Okay. I'll have Melissa just kind of run through the utilities real quick.
I'll leave that for this one.
Sure.
Leave the pretty picture up since utilities is not ever the, the pretty stuff. So I'm Melissa Flynn, I'm the civil engineer on the project. I'm actually also a resident of North Andover. We moved here two years ago, so it's great to kind of get involved in the town that I live in. So as Ken mentioned, and as Rebecca and Gene have mentioned, we've received our stormwater comments from Ecclestone Engineering as well as tech on the civil side. As for the, the stormwater, we are meeting all of the, it's a new development, so we'll be meeting all of the Massachusetts DEP standards as well as the North Andover stormwater and erosion control requirements that the town has on top of the plant, of the state standards. Our primary method of treating the peak attenuation as well as the water quality are the subsurface infiltration galleys. If you've looked at Lisa's, Lisa Ecclestone's comments, her major one was about the soil condition. So we're actually having additional geotech information to confirm that the soils will be suitable for infiltration. Right now, the, we've had successful infiltration tests at this location and right here that we, we feel we're confident that we'll be able to achieve that. It's more this area up here that we wanted to get some additional information to confirm, and we'll work with, with Lisa to make sure that all of our soil borings and our infiltration tests comply with the state. But these rectangle areas right here are subsurface infiltration galleys. We're providing all the required pretreatment before the stormwater reaches these. Since we are so close to the lake, we are falling within the critical area, so we're moving 44% of the total suspended solids prior to entering the infiltration galleys. This area here will collect all the parking lot and will go through a sediment fore bay, dry pond before entering the infiltration structure. This area, subsurface infiltration gallery number two collects part of the driveway and this lawn area that will go through deep-sump catch basins and oil grit separator before entering the infiltration structure. The third infiltration structure at the rear of the building collects just roof runoff, so we, we are not pretreating that particular zone. Each of the three infiltration galleries will be outlitted with a riprap level spreader, which will be designed to make sure any velocity or scour is, is acceptable. So that's the, the stormwater portion of it, as I mentioned. Lisa gave us a very detailed comments that we're responding to, so there is some supplemental information we'll be providing to the board as well as Ecclestone. For our water service, it is coming in from the exist, we're proposing coming out the existing line within Caroline, the Meadows Drive, and coming out of our existing, of our main entrance with a dual separate domestic and fire protection as well as the fire department connection. One of the comments from the town was to provide a hydrant. We're proposing right at the entrance drive, we will coordinate with the fire, fire department to ensure that that location is acceptable, acceptable to them. Another comment we received was that the connection to the existing water main will be tapping sleeve, so we've provided for that. From the sanitary side, as Ken mentioned, we are lower at this point than we are at the existing parking lot, so we will use a forced main and pump station to get to the existing sanitary sewer that we are connecting into. We're coordinating with the Greater Lawrence Sanitary District as well as the DPW on making sure our, our materials and sizes all comply with the, the state and then the district's I think the only other item I, that Ken touched on was the erosion control and the long-term operation and maintenance manual, provide that the town code requires. We've developed a draft SWIP that'll be submitted for the NIPDs, and that I think is section eight of your regulations. So once we get a contractor on board, we'll, we'll finalize that and as we move forward with the construction sequence to define that further. But we'll be abiding by all the, the NIPDs requirements for that. And we've also started to develop our long-term, actually inspection, operation, and maintenance since some of our VMPs can be a bit particular and some require, require more maintenance since they aren't obvious and you're not seeing them every day. So that'll all be outlined and reviewed with Bob and his staff to make sure, moving forward, once construction is over, Edgewood's still abiding by all of the requirements of the, the SWIP and the intent of the regulations.
And probably just so that you're aware of what our potential schedule is, provided we get all of our required permits, we're not looking at starting this work until May of next year. April or May of 2017 with a potential completion of May of 2018.
As Ken had mentioned about the, the long-eared bat, one of the elements of that is you cannot clear without a, an acoustic survey done. So that's between April and October. You can't clear any trees without, since that occupies their, their pup season and it's just the time that the Army Corps has designated that you can't cut a tree down unless you've checked to make sure that the long-eared bat is not within it. So assuming we get all of our permits in line, we would be clearing in November outside that timeframe.
The shorter bat is okay?
Yes.
Short one's good.
Any utility questions or?
Gene, that's all consistent with everything we've got, because I think to the point, I am glad you're, you know, being as detailed there as you are, because when we're setting special permits, we want to be particularly rigorous on them because it's our responsibility to protect the lake for the effects of the town, so I think, I'm glad you're going through to this length, but we'll probably put you through a few more paces on this before you're done, so.
All right, I'll hand it over to Jessica Randolph, our project director.
Picture first. Yeah, she has the pretty picture.
Exactly. All right. So then we'll leave the pretty site plan up as a reference. As you can see, what we're doing here is we're showing a overall view entering the site. It's pretty much the only part of the building you're actually going to see from the road. So as we drive up this, you can see this red mark here shows kind of where we're looking at the building from. Overall, like Ken was mentioning, we have four individual buildings, which we've kind of broken up as a way to, it is a very large building for this location, so by breaking it up into little pieces, we've made it kind of look like it's four interconnected buildings rather than one massive building. It also allows us to get that New England vernacular feel. Just as a reference, right now, we are only showing a neutral color palette because we haven't finished discussing color selections with Edgewood, but we are following, planning on following the color selections in the cottages that are currently on site and doing some, again, using those colors to break down the mass of the building. And so that's kind of what you're looking at as you walk into the site. But the other important one, we know everybody's very curious about, is what you're going to see from the top of Half Mile Hill. So what we did is we actually took our building and the site and modeled it in our computer program and put in a bunch of trees. On this image, you can, we're basically, it's a, in view from up where the chairs are at the top of Half Mile Hill. So in this model, you can actually see a little bit of the original building of the largest part of Edgewood. So we took that same picture and we overlaid that model that we have in the site, and unfortunately, it's a little bit lighter than I would have liked to see on this image, but I wanted to kind of show where it falls in the building. But because of the height of the building, our building is actually under the 35-foot maximum allowed for that plot, and these trees are actually 60 to 80-foot tall here. We're leaving a huge, large buffer by the building, so that basically by the time everything's done and the trees have, we've rebuilt the trees as much as possible and grown back, you will not actually see our building from Half Mile Hill.
John, one of the, one of the pieces that we're also going to be doing is we've gone out and we've surveyed where the buildings are going to sit currently, and we're going out and we're going to try and naturally save as many trees outside of that, footprint of that, of those buildings as well. So, you know, it's hard to represent that right at this point in time, but our intent is, you know, naturally we'll have to be careful where we're cutting and filling because that's a problem for the root systems, but we've already made that determination internally that we're going to identify trees, because there are some very large trees there and we want to maintain as many of those as we can within that site.
What is the height of the fill being added on the eastern side of the building?
I'm going to go look on a different plan. Hold on a moment. I think it's on the, I think it's on the back of this one. So it's Contour 175, and the bottom of the hill is 168. The finished floor elevation is 176.
So it's somewhere between 7 and 8 feet.
So again, and, and that's, that's sloping down, and the intention is, you know, this will be, it will be vegetated, it will be stabilized, vegetated, and the intention that we've been talking to with, with Bob is that they're actually going to let that go back natural. They're going to let that, that hill beyond this walkway, this, this is a reinforced grass walkway that the fire department has asked to get around the, the building. It's just a walkway, it's not, it's not for driving, but at the top, basically the top of that hill and then the, the rest of the hill could go back natural.
One of the, this might be a good time to answer your question is, we, it might be a good idea for us to go out and take a little walk and, you know, certain things that you could probably stack, maybe some of the building corners or the, the parking or something.
And that's, that's what we've done already, John, we've, we've identified the building corners in anticipation of that.
And the clearing limit line?
Yes, and the clearing limit line.
Okay, great. Could we find the time to go take a look? Yeah, I mean, what do people think, I mean, from, you know, we typically, Saturday morning seems to be the generally preferred time.
That's, that's perfectly fine with me. You let me know what you know, Saturday, and I'll be there.
I don't know which Saturday is good for people.
We only have two Saturdays. We have two Saturdays between the next meeting, right?
Yep, so next meeting is the fourth, so there's two Saturdays in between.
So it's Saturday and next Saturday.
Well, I'm actually, I would prefer probably both Saturdays to this one.
The 21st, uh, 24th and the first of our tour.
Yeah. I don't know what people's preference is, but I'm okay with both, as far as I know. But the first, better do you assume?
I can go the same way.
I just might not be able to make it.
Yeah, the first actually is probably better for me than this weekend.
Why don't we say the first at nine o'clock?
Yeah.
And we might want to invite the conservation commission and the trails people, we might as well have them on the marrier.
That's a good idea.
She wants to have it at eight?
No.
Well, then you could stay longer.
No.
No, it's, it's the weekend.
Are you sure? There was a little hesitation with that.
Okay. Jane, anything more we need to cover tonight? Maybe, let's do a little more on the buildings. Do we have different, like, profile, big and profiles there?
You mean this?
Yeah, that, yeah. And it actually would be helpful to understand the process you went through, I mean, this learning experience, because I think you put a lot of thought into it, how you went about and designed the way it is. I mean, you explained the general concept of it, and how did you break into the pieces? Yeah?
Just that. No floor.
Yeah, that was, so focused on giving you the pretty pictures and didn't bring a floor plan, so. But basically to kind of cover the concept of the small home plan, the idea is, you know, they determined that the elderly have much better results in life care as they age if they can remain in their home. Now, in some cases, that's just not possible because of the level of care you need. So what this new small home concept is, is basically giving the elderly a more independent style of living with the care that they need, but giving them a home-like environment. So the kitchen, the living room, the dining room are all surround, you know, are all surrounded by their individual residence, where they can have their bedroom, their own bathroom, their privacy, but then they can go out and interact with people and have activities that they can do, but it's a safe environment. So they've determined that somewhere between eight to 12 residents per home is considered ideal. So we work with 10, which is kind of right in the middle, and that worked for Edgewood's planning purposes. When we started looking at that, it was in between three homes and four homes, depending on what the demand was, of course, for the market, because you always have to consider the market. And so when we started looking at this, I think we went through a lot of different processes of how do we connect these three? We want to give as many people views of the trees as possible, try and keep everybody off where the parking is going to be, the street access, allow us to create- off where the parking is going to be, the street access, allow us to create these beautiful little gardens for people to stay in. And then, again, it's 38,000 square feet, which in a commercial district's not a big deal, you can work with that. But when you're trying to give that residential feel, it's a lot easier if you can break it down into the 8,000 square foot homes. And then basically what we did is we connected it with some of the service spaces, the amenities for the residents. And like, the, we went, like I said, we were talking about the New England vernacular style, which of course uses the peak roofs, the nice double hung windows, a lot of wood siding trimmed. We have fireplaces in each home actually in the living room, so we've got some of the nice stone brickwork.
And John, if I can add, it's, you know, there's no long corridors for this type of housing. Everybody is connected off of that center access and even from a staffing standpoint. So we're not going to be having multiple people go into those buildings every day. There's going to be what we're calling a universal worker. So they're going to be doing programming activities with the residents. They're also going to be the folks, they'll be all serve, safe, certified. They'll be the ones that will be helping to prepare the meals. They'll be having the meals with the residents. It's not, you know, you're trying to create that whole family environment. So that's really what the philosophy is, is to, is to create that home-like feel for them and to allow them to, you know, to reach their maximum potential. So, you know, we've shared one story, I think, previously where we had one woman that's suffering from dementia, that she teaches a watercolor class at Edgewood. Her family never knew that she could paint watercolors and here she is. She may not recognize certain family members when they come to visit, however, she's able to lead them in a watercolor class, which, you know, that's what this is trying to do. It's trying to bring all those pieces out. And these folks that will be in these facilities are going to be higher functioning residents as part of that, because you want them to be engaged and to, you know, participate in the process. And some of them may help us with, you know, preparing vegetables or whatever, you know, setting up the table for the kitchen or for the dining room, but trying to get them involved and active in as many things as you can possibly.
Yes, be initiated, that's what would be a step after this.
Well, you know, Edgewood's philosophy is that our residents are the architects of their life, of their, with their, with their family members. So as we do within the main facility, we keep people in their rooms, we do not force them to move out. Sometimes medically, you are required to do that. And those are, you know, those are certainly smaller cases when that occurs. And then we would work with the families to assist them with that. And then we do have the skilled nursing facility, so if they needed to move into the skilled nursing facility, we would do that.
Can it all be contained within that?
Yeah, within the whole, the whole footprint of everything there.
Okay, any other questions? So we're going to be back in two weeks, we have all of the engineering, I think that's the piece of lenders. You know, we ought to just make sure that, you know, we have a process to get the conservation restriction and the rest of the parcel that's not developed, the trail access agreement, what are you talking about?
And with, I've already communicated with the trustees of the reservation, they have already accepted the 15 acres, setting it up in a conservation restriction. They voted earlier this year. We haven't seen a draft from them, but we can get that from them. But it will.
Okay, we just get it in the mix and that's, we know what it is.
Yep, yep, but they've already, they've already accepted the conservation restriction.
Yeah, and then I think the other piece is the giving the town east access over the trails so that we can, you know, what people do today, we can do completely legally.
But back on the buildings a little bit, you mentioned fireplaces, I assume they're gas?
Gas.
Okay, because I saw the chimneys, I thought you were putting up fake chimneys originally.
They are.
Because I was like, you don't have fireplaces in assisted living. What about the mechanicals for the building, heating systems, nothing's on the, outside the building, they're all internal?
Everything's on the attic spaces?
We have everything in the attic spaces except for the condense, I remember the wrong piece, but we put everything in places where it's hidden by the higher roofs.
Okay.
John, just one thing, the engineering, we're still waiting on additional geotechnical information. So we're pushing them to try to get that information so we can get the engineering revised, but we are working on that. So I don't know if we'll have that totally complete by the next meeting, but we are working on it and we'll be in touch with Ms. Ankelson.
Hopefully they can get it to Ms. Ankelson by October 4th. I am going to request that you turn it around for the 11th, but it'll be very close.
Yes, okay. We actually have someone that we're probably going to be doing test tests when I excavate up. I haven't spoken to Ken since earlier today. So that should occur next week.
Yeah.
If not, sooner.
Is there any comments from the audience? Okay, thank you. See you in a few weeks and we'll see you on Saturday before that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Same with the trail head.
Thank you.
Okay, next victim.
And Rebecca is going to tee this up.
Okay.
So applicant seeks a modification to our site plan review special permit, excuse me, this is for Four High Street, RCG Melz is the applicant. This is for a site plan special permit for the construction of 108 parking spaces, including curb landscaping and stormwater improvements. This project is banned upon as a previously approved project to provide vehicle and pedestrian connectivity to the center parking lot. If you remember from the original permit, this is the, formerly the building 37 that was demolished, that was labeled as the area for future development. We sent the application review to stormwater as well as the, for department review. We've received initial comments from building, fire and engineering and are still waiting for stormwater comments.
Okay, so we'll, I guess, we'll leave it to the applicant to explain the story here.
All right, thank you. I'm David Steinberg from RCG LLC. I want to give a little bit of the big picture because we haven't been here for a little while. And as you know, in the original center lot permit, we left this as a future development site. We weren't quite sure what we wanted to do with it as we were going through the process. But given some market feedback and the way things were going with leasing and with showings and with frankly, the impression of the site, once we took the building down and we ruminated on it a little bit, we decided it'd be appropriate to keep expanding what we did down the middle of the site and take it around the back of the former Converse headquarters. So basically the full expanse of where the former manufacturing building used to be. What we've done here, and Phil Henry of Civil Design Group can take you through some more of the details, is basically connect the parking lots, the main parking lots that were used by Schneider and Converse that go out toward the ball fields to the north of the site, back to the central parking lot there, add some landscaping and make the connections through the site fully as we develop different parts of the site. One of the things that's been happening is we've actually been filling up the buildings, as you can probably tell, for the past couple of years, we've leased about 100,000 square feet of office space. We have another 40,000 square feet under a lot of intent right now. So as the buildings start to fill up and we're getting a sense of where do people want to park? Everybody wants to park in the, you know, the center lot's about to open up. The concept of the center lot was really to accommodate retail uses. And we haven't even started to lease the 30,000 square foot, you know, single story building five that's there to, just to the south of the center lot. And we want to make sure those spaces are going to be preserved for those users. That's been the most important feedback we've gotten from potential restaurants and retail users. That can't be parked full of office users. At the same time, the views that were opened up against the old building 36, which is essentially two stories because of the way the mezzanines work, you know, out to the pond and through the site, were really dramatically changed the character of that space and allowed us to look at it more as office space than as the more traditional industrial use it had been, even though it's, you know, 28-foot clear ceilings in some cases, it was dark. And now we can open up some of the light there. This gives us another 100 spaces in the middle of the site. We don't need them for any zoning reasons. We've, as you know, plenty of parking around the entirety of East and West Mill, those shared parking lots. But this is a highly desirable area for the parking, allows us to keep more of a buffer off Osgood Pond in the back and in the future potentially develop the less utilized parking out toward the ball fields or potentially in the garage in East Mill where we had permitted buildings previously. Another thing we were, we came back to address, which I think we'd brought up when we got the original center lot permits, was what to do with the cooling tower that sits down in the middle of the site. And we studied that quite a bit while we were doing the center lot work, working with our mechanical contractors and are relocating it about 50 feet further into the site, more into the tree line, and so that it will be set on the ground instead of on the concrete pylons it's on now. So it'll be lower, it'll be quieter and more efficient and more tucked away at the end of the site. And it's sort of, in the scale of the site, it's kind of hard to picture there, but Phil can sort of walk you through on the plan as well, where that was located.
Yeah, the existing cooling tower is here. I left it on just for contextual purposes and we're proposing to relocate it further west, about 50 feet or so.
Okay, unless people have questions, I can pass it on to Phil on some of the.
I just have one comment on your letter. On the downtown overlay, it's one parking, one bicycle parking space per 20. You have racks. So if you have a six bicycle, a rack which holds six bicycles, that covers you. You don't need six entire bicycle racks which usually hold multiple bikes, so you're off by two.
We could have many. Yeah, I think that.
You don't need as many as what you're proposing, just so you know, it'd be a little overkill.
I understand. And we're actually going out and relocating the ones we did before as we figured out the entrances a little bit. You can also see part of this is to readdress the facades of the building. But no, we appreciate that feedback. Right now, I think we're leaning toward just the individual sort of circular posts or upside down.
Those usually still hold two, one on each side, yeah.
Those can hold a couple.
Yeah, so.
Or whatever, but, okay.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Philip Penry with Civil Design Group. So as Dave mentioned, we are here before you for seeking a modification from the original site plan issued a few years ago or last year for the modification of this area right in here. As you, as you know, this, this site is substantially complete pending a few weeks of striping and additional landscaping. But what we decided to do is introduce 108 parking spaces in this area behind building 36 and also introduce some additional landscaping. Back in July, we had met with Jean and Jennifer actually on a preliminary layout and we got some good feedback from them, much of what's been incorporated into, into this design here. So some of the highlights are, as I mentioned, 108 parking spaces created in what we're calling Phase Two. But by way of creating some vehicular connection points, internal connection points here and also modifying the connection point there, we're losing six spaces that have recently just been constructed. So we're netting about 102 parking spaces in this general vicinity. Overall, the limit of work area is about 1.25 acres in that, in that square area behind building 36. And what we have done is we've converted, I could zoom into the site plan. I also sent this to you, Rebecca. What you, what you see here in green highlight, this is a zoomed in area of behind building 36, what you see here and highlighted in green is landscape area that we're converting from impervious to landscaping. And that totals about 8,000 square feet. And we actually broke it down in a table mainly for conservation from 0 to 25, 25 to 50 and 50 to 100 with respect to the pond and the wetlands associated towards the rear. In those landscape areas, we have provided some designated snow storage areas not to conflict with, with the ground cover and the shrubs that we're proposing. All in all, we're proposing 13 new trees and 73 shrubs. And actually, in the, in the retention areas, the bioretention areas, is over 500 species of grass and perennials and low-lying landscape areas as well. Also, one of the things that we wanted to do is mainly for conservation is not further encroach into the 25-foot no disturbance. In fact, we've accomplished by actually mitigating or, or increasing that landscaping between the 0 to 25. Mainly, this green area over here lies within the 0 to 25, which we're going from impervious to pervious. And in fact, if you look on the site plan, there, there's two anti-hatch areas here that was previously approved to be impervious that we are actually, those are the remaining areas within the 0 to 25 that is impervious, that's existing to remain. But we're actually reducing the impervious coverage by 300 square feet from the previously previously approved Phase One application that was before you a year ago. As far as drainage is concerned, if you can picture this parking lot here and this parking lot here broken up into two different areas, the, what we're calling the lower parking lot, lower because it's, it's lower in grade by about two to three feet, is managed via the bioretention area located in this gray hatch here. And this upper parking lot is managed in this bioretention area up there. This bioretention area here is part of Phase One, we're just expanding it, but we're keeping the same media elevations for all the different stone and the soil. So the hydrologically, it's acting no different. So which left us with managing our, our stormwater for the main portion. And because there is previously approved seven bioretention areas, we decided to adopt the same methodology that was previously approved. And this bioretention area is being managed as stormwater very similar to the way this one does and this one does in the Phase One. All in all, the overflow is connected from, from, the overflow from this basin and that basin tie into the recently installed drain manhole two, 2.4, which is up in this area and discharges to Osgood Pond. So we're not, we're not changing any of the analysis points or the stormwater management discharge points. So that's, that's the 10,000-foot view. I'm happy to answer any specific questions.
Jean, from your perspective, we're back with progress. You know, this is really more technical engineering stuff than anything else.
Right, you're filed with conservation as well.
Yes, so.
When is that hearing open?
We, we met with them last week and we had sent plans to lease the same day we filed, September 2nd, I think. We have not received comments from Lisa, nor has Jennifer, but she did reach out today just requesting some soil information. So we had sent the initial due diligence soil report from, from Phase One to her. So we haven't, we haven't received any feedback from, from her yet. Obviously, we need her input before we move forward. But we did receive comments back from fire. They wanted to confirm that, that the fire truck, their fire truck could circulate around the site. Our fire truck that's shown on the plan is, is slightly larger than, than North Andover's fire truck. And I submitted that via email back to Rebecca. I've not heard, I'm assuming they're offset. Okay. And then today we received two comments from engineering. One of the comments was, make sure Lisa's happy. And then the other comment was, we need to consider some edge protection along this row of parking here. This, this row here, there's actually a retaining wall, two to three-foot-high retaining wall to achieve the grade in between the two parking areas. There's a guide rail, wooden guide rail, guard rail that is, that is, serves as edge protection. On this side, we did not propose anything, but we are going to introduce some wheel stops in that, in that area. So those are the comments that we've received today.
We've been announcing the applications out at the same time, so I think Lisa, she'll definitely have comments turned around within a few days, I would think. But we're really waiting on that at this point.
Dave, so I know you were sort of holding this portion aside until you thought about it, but I just refresh my memory here, was it, was it always likely to be parking or was it possible that there could be other uses?
Yeah, we've had an unfulfilled application filed at the same time, so I think Lisa, she'll definitely have comments turned around within a few days, I would think. But we're really waiting on that at this point.
So I know you were sort of holding this portion aside until you thought about it, but I just refreshed my memory here. Was it, was it always likely to be parking or was it possible that there could be other uses other than parking? And if that's the case, does this preclude any other alternative uses down the road?
I don't think it precludes the uses. We did do some testing of the soils there to see if it would support buildings, parking structures, other things. If we felt like we needed to rapidly continue to develop the site, I think originally we thought of it as probably putting a building back of some sort. But given, you know, the, the amount of land we have, the amount of space we still have to lease, the dynamics of the site and how we felt about it down the middle of the site, we felt that this time, that parking area can be really beneficial to finishing off the leasing of the buildings. And, you know, sometime down the road, if we're so fortunate as to be able to afford, you know, buildings for more commercial development, I think, we could probably come back to that. I think our preference is probably to work more on the, on the more remote parking areas that don't get any use.
Yeah, because the overall footprint is fairly wide. So yeah, maybe working your way back in is the way to go. Anything else?
Yes, cooling tower. Thank you for moving it out of the wetlands in the pond and everything like that. I know that was a cumbersome project on that, trying to figure that out. What's going to be the overall height approximately of that?
Well, it's, the unit itself is about, it's a little under 19 feet tall. So actually, if you see the unit that's there, it's almost exactly the same size, just the engineering dynamics, like it, as the engineer says, it's going to be the same size one way or the other. Now it sits up about six feet in the air. The new one will be set on a concrete pad that'll be two feet high. So overall, it'll be over 20 feet.
Do you have a bottom full of foot reduction?
Yeah, right. Three to four feet lower than the existing one. And it's more out of the way and set, you know, the grades start to get pretty dramatic actually, even as you, as you move back there. So I think it'll be more screened in most directions and more really into the, into the trees and brush that are back in the corner of the site.
Now, when it gets back to though, I know you're getting closer to it, to the residence, but it's pretty sheer up that hill. Is there a...
Yeah, I think, Rebecca, if you go up. Well, this, this unit is, I brought the brochure thing, but it didn't have the decibels on. It's much quieter than the existing unit.
Last I came, yes.
So we, we think it will be, you know, quieter in every direction to everybody versus what's there, is essentially what the engineer, how he described it to us.
You know, it's a little bit, you know, it's a little bit far away from some people.
Right. It'll be more buffered by the trees. One of the things that happens in the current location is that it echoes across the water out to, that's what we've heard from the Sutton Pond condominium, people that if we could get it a little off the edge of the pond.
Inside joke. Oh, sorry.
The male, yes, sorry.
We're just having a little of an inside joke.
Is that a harbor now? We got mail today.
I will also say, you know, obviously, as we're, as we've been moving in residence, actually, you know, and Corin is pretty close to that area. It's a pretty big benefit to us to not have it, you know, throwing off that kind of noise. Yeah, yeah, because now we have operable windows in the building and people living there.
Are all your residential units leased out there?
So the first phase of residential units were 17 units. They were delivered last February. They took three to four months to rent, but they got 100% leased. So we're just finishing up now the second phase of 22 units. Those will, we're expecting to occupy those in November. So we just released those to the market. We've already got nine applications, so.
Did you have at least that one that's on the top?
The tower? We decided not to build the tower unit.
Tenet?
It was a little more complicated than we'd expected. We actually have, people ask us about it all the time. Mostly our, our commercial tenants in the building who, you know, get up there and have taken a look at it and go, can I have an apartment there? It's a little complicated from code and engineering and plumbing and electrical and, and so we figured we'd leave that alone and maybe come up with something we can do up there eventually.
Can our harbor masses see the harbor?
Yeah. It is quite a 360 view from up there.
Excellent. Well, good, well, thank you. Appreciate you coming in and, you know, looks like, I know it, this is a little complicated. This is a lot of balancing, but thank you and hopefully we'll, next time we'll make progress on that.
Yeah, so we saw, I think at this point, as long as we can, we saw Lisa Edelman's comments, that we may be able to make a decision.
That'd be great. All right, thank you.
Do we have a limit on modification to modification of modification?
This is modification to modification, but so it's happening for the first 30 years, so.
That being a negative, a negative, a negative is positive.
Yeah.
Jean, anything else?
As far as the Osgood Mill or two, we've made some progress. So Peter and I worked out some network comments. Lynn, if you haven't received it today, I...
I, I did glance at it and I was just curious if you thought I was going to say the graphics were fine or if you expect me to say that the graphics...
No, I anticipate we should definitely change up the graphics.
Okay, because I was like...
Yeah, the map itself may likely have to stay, but I think we should just mix it up.
Well, I can use the new map, I didn't, it just highlights it slightly.
Yeah, so it, it's in progress. I think it should be ready fairly soon. Whether we decide to mill it out in now or wait for the spring when landscaping and things like that will happen, you guys can decide, but there's been progress on that.
And I think the thought was to also create rainstoppers.
Yep.
Yes, yes, exactly. Because I think it's, it's more, there's a lot of things they would do to be more careful if they just knew what they were sensitive to it. I don't think all of them would do that, but I think most of them would. Yeah, that's a great idea.
The idea in this one is to target lake shore and direct tributary of butters.
Yeah.
So we're doing some work to identify butters to the direct tributaries, but I think we have a way of doing it.
Yeah.
Oh, do we, on, we're not using my map anymore, right?
Yes, we are. Well, it's through MapGee.
Okay, there's a new one now? Is that a link on the website?
It is.
Okay.
It's still labeled GIs.
Well, I had a favorite, so I went in that way and it didn't go anymore.
So I have just one question about the tree guidance. Was there a concern with farmers?
Well, John was going to contact us, but John Smollett, last meeting said he'd reach out to us. He hasn't yet. In looking at the non-disturbance, when it speaks of any type of vegetation removal, it excludes agricultural use. I'm anticipating that will be his comment, but he hasn't reached out yet.
Sure, okay, thanks.
So there is an exclusion for agricultural use. Whether we want to be such specific in the, in the removal protocol, I'm not sure. If, if, if they make a phone call and we talk to them and they are in agricultural use, we can exempt them.
Yeah.
I don't know if, if you guys want to spare a couple of minutes. I, I did go out to the Princeton property, Westford location on Saturday, and then I actually talked to them yesterday. And, you know, if, if I could sort of just give you a really quick word dump of that, that might be useful. The property in Westford is actually very interesting. There's a come-off of 110, it's very rural, and you go in and you drive for better part of a mile till you get to the place, which is actually, was surprising to me, and the property has about 100 acres to it. A lot of it is wet. The way he explained it to me was that the upland is, the reason why they had to do it is the upland was pretty far back. But it is interesting, it's 100 acres parcel. The, when you come in, I thought that, you know, my personal opinion that you see the pool and stuff like that, I thought the ends of the buildings were designed in a fairly attractive way. I was not so wildly impressed by the long side of the buildings. I thought they were a little bit too busy. In terms of the architectural elements, I didn't particularly like the, the doorways. I thought they were a little cluegy. And the other thing that I noticed when I saw it was that the space between the end of the parking and the buildings was actually fairly close. And you know how like, when you have the parking go right up against the, where the sidewalk is? At the edge of the car actually goes onto the sidewalk, so it leaves very, very little space. So those were sort of things that I saw that I didn't sort of particularly like. The other thing I couldn't understand that's really weird is, if you've seen the pictures, there's this big open area in the middle of all the buildings that's completely empty. And you think, why didn't they landscape that and make like a little park out of it or something? And the reason is that's where the leaching field is, so they couldn't really touch it. So they had a few other things that I wasn't particularly aware of. All the utilities were out, you know, like, I mean, not utilities, but like all the air conditioning units were down flat on the ground outside, so it's, you know, and it weren't really protected. It was a neat property, it was well landscaped, well maintained, that sort of thing, very quiet actually. So that was sort of, you know, kind of my takeaway from seeing it. I met with him yesterday morning to just talk about a little bit. And what they, and two or three takeaways. One, one point, at one point I did push was the, the ability to get more, you know, when the main aisle where the residential's on one side and the commercial's on the other, the main street, was, I said, they really need to, I think that's where putting the building back a little bit and creating a bigger space between parking and the residential actually makes a big difference in the landscape a bit better. The problem, the biggest concern I have, and I actually still have it to some degree, is when, you know, when you come in on the site and there's that circular thing, you know, and you actually, if you go to the right, you drive into the residential area. He said, that's the curve, that's the view that has to be good, that's the view that has to have a sense of place to it. And I said, right now, you know, I can see where you explained to me the architectural features a little bit better than Westford. It still doesn't strike me as it does at all. And that's the most important one, is that first building that you see. And I said, you know, if you look at it, it only has one doorway, so the building's not symmetrical in a sense, you know. And they realistically can't put two doorways in or put the doorway in the middle based on making the whole thing work. So they're going to have to, you know, the doorway is kind of crappy actually, I think, is, you know, my personal opinion. But they agreed they would look at it, blow it up and, and look at it. So I thought they were, they're willing to do something. The only thing I still struggle with is the global architectural elements. It, it's, you know, we're not, none of us are...
Same, was Westford the same?
It is similar, but they did, I think they put better thought into it. This is a, a more high-end project than Westford. I mean, you know, every one of these projects, one of the things that I wanted to try to understand is if they had 100 acres in Westford, you know, that would be, where is your development cost? In other words, the higher your development cost are, the less money you have for amenities. So in the case of Westford, the, the development cost came from having to build a mile-long roadway, snaking it through over wetlands. And that, that was really where the expense came in. For this project, what he told me was the roadway improvements, you know, the, the traffic signalization, the, the, you know, the crosswalk of the street is more than a million dollars. It's actually imaginably high, but I believe it's, it's very expensive to make all those changes. That's the, the big thing. But they still have, I mean, they realize they're designing for a higher-end market. One of the things I asked him, I said, we started talking about Berry Street a little bit, and, you know, the Berry Street project, people may or may not like it or whatever. It's actually, I think, the same architect that they're using. But he said it was interesting, because if you look at those buildings, those buildings are actually a little bit more colonial than, than what's in this project. But he said that, he said the building materials, it's a higher-end product, interesting enough, that they're building on this property. It's more expensive and it's more of a differentiator. And he said, those things at Berry Street are actually less expensive and, you know, down the road, they may deteriorate faster. So it was an interesting view into the thought process that they went through, which I think is important to understand. I, I still feel there's stuff in terms of the, just the look and feel of the long side of the building that, you know, we, we need to do a better job on it, except that, you know, part of the problem is you don't want to design by committee and I don't know, do we have anybody, Jean, that around town that would even be a volunteer architect or consultant to us on something like that? Because I feel, and I, and I, I mean, I can say what I like, but I can't like sketch it out. And, you know, I think probably everybody else is in a silver boat. And so I don't know if there's, you know...
Let me think about it, yeah.
If there's just anybody, anybody would know that might come in and just give us a little bit of advice. I mean, that's part of the reason why I even asked that woman tonight, how did you design it, the way you designed it, just to understand. It was very welcome if someone could come in and comment it.
What does the word cluegy mean?
Pudge, pudge.
Pudge, pudge, yeah.
Kitchy.
Really? Slaying properly constructed.
Well, I Googled it.
Is there a local term?
There's a term called kish.
I know that term.
Yeah, it's probably, I should have probably used more kitchy than cluegy. It's kind of the...
I've heard it.
I mean, I think what they're proposing here was better than Westford, but they admitted that they didn't particularly like the entryways in Westford that they ended up with and they wanted to improve it, but...
Part of it is they have the offsetting ones because they, the distance, the maximum distance for egresses, so...
Well, on that one, the reason why they did two was because there's no access entrance on the other side, because it's the side where the leaching field is. So everything is out, going to the parking. So that's a little bit different. But, you know, the idea is if you only have a single entryway in the front, you, it has to be a point present visually, you can't just come and blow narrow lines of things, so.
John, when you were there, did you have an impression regarding the scale of the buildings?
What was interesting about it was, the buildings, as I said, I think the one thing was I thought the long side of the buildings were architecture a little bit of a mess. They, you know, too many elements, that sort of thing. Although there were a few things you said they're going to do differently here to break it up a little bit better. The thing about it is it's such much more of a rural setting. I mean, it actually is, it was deathly quiet, you know, so if you like that, it's a great place to live. But it was really quiet and you had a feeling of more being in the country. Whereas I think that here, that you're not going to have anywhere close to as much open space, so it's going to feel a little bit more dense. But it's not so dense that you would build like with an urban palette, you know, like something like an Assembly Square or something like that, because you know, we're like in, you know, next to the garden in Boston, because you're not on a city escape. So they were, they were going with their, their style a little bit that they've had before, so.
Yeah, I thought the approach, you see the center, community center in the pool area first, and the buildings run this way, so you really see the ends of them. So I don't think you got dramatically hit with the scale of them until you went to the rear and you actually looked up across that open space, which is the leaching field, and then you see the long side of the building. But I, I didn't feel as I drove up that these are just massive buildings myself.
No, no, and I thought the architecture at the end of the building was the best part of the architecture.
Well, Berry Street, didn't that end up over around 50 feet with no grade, 45, 50 for scale?
I think it's one story shorter. I think it's three stories, not four. I mean, just by driving by, it doesn't look as, as big, but, you know, I haven't stopped to count the floors, so I don't know.
They had, they had to make some change because of zoning. I don't even know.
They're not subject to zoning.
But the zoning board of approvals.
They reduced the number of...
Well, they reduced the number of, yeah, but they're...
But not subject, that's it.
So, so I, I think they're willing to listen to us, but I, my, just my personal opinion is I think the, the long facade of the building is a little bit more work. So to the extent we can get somebody to help us, that we, we could translate our thoughts, I, I think it would be good, so.
Fewer, fewer material things.
Maybe, maybe, maybe.
I think they had seven.
Yeah, but again, it's, it's like I, when I start getting into these things, I actually start getting a little bit humbled because, I mean, I sort of know what I like, but I'm not an expert at this and, you know, sometimes you just don't know, so we've got to be a little bit careful about that, so. So good, so well, thank you for letting me kind of give you my two cents on that. So what else we got, Jean?
Just meeting minutes.
Just a typo on 50, line 53, change order of, if no one has anything else. I'll make a motion to approve the September 6, 2016 meeting minutes as amended.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion adjourned?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, great.